Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, November 9th, I believe?
Yes.
This is another one of our extraordinary meetings during the COVID period. One of the first things we start with in these meetings is an update of current COVID events, and we'd like to start with our health agent, who happens to be here.
Hello. We continue to stay in the yellow as of now. We've had no new reported cases since Thursday's meeting, and on Thursday and Friday of last week, I visited all the various food establishments and hair salons in town, just putting a mask, a masked guidance in their windows, and asking if they needed any help with anything that's going on on the COVID front, to remind them about the hours of operation, and it was pretty successful.
Good. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it, alright. No news is good news.
How are you doing?
Nothing from the fire? Nothing from police? Alright.
Then I dump on you, I'm sorry. Because we need to talk more about the internal policies.
Okay, you can dump.
Yeah, okay. We need to talk more about the internal policies for when we have an employee who has tested positive. Basically, I think there's a fair amount of confusion with the department heads and with the employees about what they should be doing. So, you know, I worked with Sandy and with Linda to try and draft, I don't know if it's a new, I guess it's a new policy, simply because when we worked on all these back in June, we weren't thinking so much about impact of the rest of the employees if we had someone who tested positive. And so, you know, I've done a draft of the actual wording. Both of them suggested I get some sort of flow chart, because people learn differently in the sense of a pure text document might not, they might not learn as much from that as a flow chart, as a diagram, even though it might have a lot of the same information. And so, I wanted to, the board doesn't have to approve any of this today. I would hope that, you know, Bob and the chiefs could take a look at this also, but to get something more definitive that we can discuss with department heads and discuss with employees, even if in a draft form, so that people know what they need to do and what they can do, for instance, what are the requirements for returning to work, what are the requirements for staying home, that type of thing. So that, I'm hoping that everybody has the same message, not, you know, that they understand it the same way that everybody else does.
Tom?
I'm sorry, yep.
So, what happens if somebody tests positive but has no symptoms?
Then...
Will we allow them to work from home until they get the...
We could, yeah.
If they don't have any symptoms but they tested positive?
I mean, right now, we're saying right up here that we don't want them to work from home if they've tested positive. We could make that exception, that if they're asymptomatic, that obviously, as you said, they still need to stay home, but they could work from home, not take the federal leave or take the town leave. That'd be a possibility. I mean, we've got a policy, at least in place, that covers exactly when they can get, come back to work, in terms of asymptomatic or asymptomatic situations.
Has this been disseminated yet?
No, I talked this morning with Sandy and Linda, went through a draft with them, they made some edits to it, and then I'm presenting it to you at this point. I haven't sent it out to department heads or anything, I wanted to get feedback from this group first.
Charlie, is this including first responders?
Right, so if you, you see down at the bottom of the flow chart, or, you know, or even the paragraph, so if an employee's an essential employee, and that goes under the definition of the state, but also, to some extent, the state also delegates that definition to, for instance, in this town, you know, we need paychecks. So, accounting staff could be considered essential employees, where someplace else they might not be for whatever reason. But if they're an essential employee and they don't test positive, they can continue to come to work, but there are additional restrictions. Bob has them from the state, I have them, let's say. Basically, it's much stricter in terms of interaction with other employees and such. And what, this was even before the concept of having the state saying, "You need to now wear masks in public..."
And your EMDs, right?
Yeah. Because we'll get to the mask order in a minute also.
Yeah.
They just had gotten a message just before we came to this meeting of an advisory from Copeland and Page, too. So, yeah, I don't do the school, the school, I should stay away from that. They're doing their, you know, they've got their own procedures and protocols in place, and they appear to be working, but I needed something for the town side, which included, you know, all the departments outside of the school.
Do you want an action?
Well...
I have a problem with that.
And it can be revised even next, you know, tomorrow night, I mean, we've got COVID on the agenda tomorrow night, we've got COVID on the agenda if we have a possible Thursday meeting, so if we need to make further revisions, it might be helpful to have something in place in the meantime.
ample opportunities to make changes. So, I suppose we should take an action to say that this is authorized to release to our employees? Anybody have any further comments?
I just need some clarifications, Bob. For the, what do we, do you have any, so let's say Patient Zero isn't available, they're sick enough that, you know, we can't get information from them. Do we fall, what do we fall back on in terms of making a determination of which employees were in close contact? Do we talk to the department head? Do we say to employees, "If you were, if you did, you know, here are the qualifications for close contact, if you meet these qualifications with this particular person," and we probably talk to the likely individuals, "then here's the protocol." I mean, what would we do if we didn't have Patient Zero available?
We've never faced it before, but certainly, we'll just have to try to take it and we'll wear it again. They work within certain departments, talk to people who've been close to that person, take them in touch with, if there's any of the options, they've been out on, you know, people's homes, different food establishments, whatever the situation may be.
Okay.
Just to see what the technical...
Then, the other would be, if, if they don't take the tests, if these affected employees, forgetting about Patient Zero, but the exposed employees don't take the tests, then is it 10 or 14 days, and they don't have symptom? Obviously, if they don't have symptoms, if they have symptoms, it's a whole different thing. But how many days should elapse since the employee leaves the workplace and then is able to return? And this is, is it 10 days from Patient Zero testing positive, is it 14 days?
14 days if they don't test positive.
Right, okay. Well, no, yeah, okay. So, 14 days from the day that Patient Zero tests positive, if they haven't tested positive in the meantime. Okay.
Sandy?
Can I ask if the person who was in contact tests negative? Is it still 14 days in the end?
No, if they test negative, they'll be contacted by the contact tracing team, and at that point, the M.D., the oncologist will go, if you have to stay out or not stay.
So, then we actually got the telecall from the state?
Well, yeah, the state gets in touch with, well, no, if they test negative, if they don't, then they can call the state, have the oncologist, and they can do so.
Alright, so if they test negative, they should call the state, have the oncologist to find out if they're back or not, no?
Definitely.
And then if they don't choose to call the state, have the oncologist, when they test negative, 14 days is...
Well, if they, if they negative, then they're saying, "No, it's wrong." I mean, who can...
Who's responsible for all these tests, pain, you know, when they come up?
Well, health insurance should be covering it.
They're, they're health insurance.
Yeah.
Part of the testing due to CFP is, when did they test? So, if I found out that you were positive today, I shouldn't have tested, you know, pain. We'll generally wait three to five days, and if in those three to five days, you haven't had any symptoms, and you test negative, you're going to be allowed back.
Okay, so Bob, so it's one test, not two?
One test, so if you're, if you're going back pain, if you didn't have it, there's only one test or a false flag.
Right, so, so, if you were exposed, then it's one test, as long as you don't have symptoms, the test should take place at least three days after the date the Patient Zero tests positive?
Yes.
Yeah, what's the incubation period?
Sorry?
The incubation period?
Yeah.
Charlie, just a quick question. On the essential worker thing, there could be situations where even though, first, I think a lot of employees are going to consider themselves essential, just for the mere fact that they work for the town, but there, there could be circumstances where a firefighter or a police officer is considered an essential employee, right?
Yeah.
There's no debate about that, but that we still may not want them to come in.
Okay.
And I don't know if you could change the word, just to...
What would you want it to say?
I just think there needs to be a, like, you know, if everyone in my department, and I'm not going to speak for the chief, if everyone in my department's healthy and I have a questionable employee, I would rather keep that employee out, even though technically they're essential. Whereas if I have five employees out, I might have to be a little...
Okay, so we have that paragraph.
...make those employees come in.
So, we have the paragraph, if the employee is deemed essential and the employee has not tested positive, then the employee can continue to report to work per the guidance, the decision, the something from the department head of the, the employee's department head?
I think that was...
From the approval?
At the discretion of the...
At the discretion. Well, in fact, I was encouraged, maybe, I may even have, if the pleasant weather will continue for a day or so, we may try and have a meeting outside, at least for this building, you know, the other buildings need to handle it differently, probably, because not everybody's there at the same time, but we may try and have one or two outdoor sessions, socially distant, obviously, to, so people aren't just reading something, if they want, you know, give them the ability to talk about it, discuss it, ask questions, but yeah, get it out.
Okay. All right, so we want to, we want to wait on this?
No, I want, I'd like to move along. I think the idea is that you'll have the ability, for instance, let's say we have these discussions during the next couple of days, and people's, and based on people's questions and ideas and suggestions, I come back to you and say...
We can always change it, yeah.
So, do you want to change the one negative test and the consequence that they can come in?
So, you're going to make this amendment now about the, at the discretion of the board?
Yes.
Okay.
With that... And the one test rather than two.
Yeah. With that amendment, can I get a motion?
Fourteen days, too?
Fourteen days, yes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And everybody's personal favorite, recycling advantage?
Well, before we get to that, just one thing I did get, I got a note through the Mass Municipal Human Resources listserv just before the meeting, they, somebody had contacted Copeland and Page about the mask advisory, and what they've been told from Copeland and Page is that it applies to municipal buildings even if they're closed, they're considered to be public buildings. So, we had that discussion back last week of whether we're going to need to wear masks in the offices, and I believe, given that reading, even if we're closed, if the idea is we have to wear them when we're closed, then we're wearing them, period, unless we're obviously doing, you know, eating, drinking, that type of thing. So, I don't know if the board wants it on the record saying that we're going to follow the state's policy on this, that employees need to wear masks at all times while in public, this includes while working in municipal buildings.
I thought we did that, but maybe we avoided...
Yeah, I think they did that on...
Okay, then...
I think we covered it.
Then that's fine, okay.
Do you want another motion, so it's not today's minutes?
No, if it hasn't, if the guy, if what we said was, they need to wear it even when the building's closed, then we've already covered ourselves.
I think we just said it all, we said it all times in the building.
Yeah, even when the building's closed, is the, was the guidance.
Okay, I'm, no, I'm saying that the, well, the board did go to reaffirm the state's policy, but I don't think they actually used the word when the building was closed.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want to, go ahead, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't cost anything to you.
I'll make a motion that everyone has to wear a mask in the buildings, even, whether they're open or closed, except when eating or drinking and needs to maintain a six-foot social distance for that purpose, eating and drinking.
Yeah, so, yeah, eating and drinking, but the six feet won't matter elsewise.
No, I think...
If you're in an office, even though you're six feet away from somebody else, you still need to be wearing a mask. I mean, the exception being, if someone has a medical reason, then they provide documentation.
Second? Yeah, I think that's how we...
Yeah, and somebody's wearing the mask, though.
So, get a second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, that, I'm done, I believe, with COVID.
Okay.
I know the side of the room is more on that, but it's not...
Okay, so we'll hold off until tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, those are going to the 10th?
Uh, alright, next.
So, Pope's Tavern, we're going to have an initial meeting outside the building this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. involving the construction company, Rob's going to be there, Scott's going to be there, Susan will be there, et cetera. I believe the architect's going to be there. If a majority of the board thinks they're going to attend, could you tell me, because I need to post for...
I'd like to be there.
I'll try.
Okay, so I'll post, okay. We may have to wear raincoats, I don't know. Let's see. On Fieldstone Farms, there's no progress report. The Class 2 on Allies Auto, we did that last week, right? Okay. We already dealt with HOPS, we already dealt with the property insurance. Regional Recycling, Todd, this meeting with representatives from Halifax, East Bridgewater, and Holbrook, about a multi-town procurement for recycling processing services. This means is, the processing services is, we've, you know, we've taken everything in the recycling truck, we've got the stuff at the center, it all goes to a facility, where we pay money these days, unfortunately, to bring those recyclables. The idea is, if we can team together, because our individual contracts are ending in June, we may be able to get, bargain a better price from one outfit, with having all three towns combine what they're bringing. And so, we're not, we're not committing ourselves anything by having this meeting or attending it. Susan and Steve Hayward both know about it, so I'm going to try and attend, but just so the boards are aware.
What location are you going to have a meeting?
They're going to Zoom.
That's not a location.
In the air. If you want to go, Troy, if you want to attend the Zoom meeting, I can give the information.
That's okay.
Okay. 415 Thompson Street, I did notify the interested parties of the board's approval for the material removal, I did note that they needed to get, they need to get other permits. Bud's Goods, Attorney Mayo suggested some changes in the host community agreement, I'll be forwarding those to Bud's Goods. I can publicize the new draft with Attorney Mayo's chance, changes, and ask for public comments for the board's meeting on the 23rd, if that's what the board would like.
Sure. Make a motion that you publish the change?
Is that because you have all the facts in, before then?
Well, as much as we're going to get, I mean, we had the public forum, everybody who was there was given an opportunity to speak. Bud's Goods has now sent a revised host community agreement to Attorney Mayo, Mayo, Attorney Mayo sent back a few changes, but he's in agreement, basically, with the changes that Bud's Goods has requested. So, you know, at some point, the board's going to do a go or no-go on the host community agreement. If the, and I guess the idea would be, you know, present the host community agreement to the residents, "Do you have any further comments?", get those comments in for the board's meeting on the 23rd. And the board of the 23rd, if they want to prove it, they could, they could say, "No, we'd like to, you know, look at this for a couple more weeks," or whatever it does, but simply moving the process along, so that we're heading towards a decision of one type or another.
I get a motion to publicize, do you, or do you...
I make the motion.
May I get a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor to publicize?
Aye.
Alright. On the alcohol inspections, Pam needs you to sign yourselves, who's doing which ones?
Yeah, I know, that's tomorrow.
Okay, we'll bump it to tomorrow. ADA self-evaluation, Attorney Mayo reviewed the contract and made a couple of minor changes, I bumped it back to the Center for Living and Working. If it's ready, I'll bring it to the board tomorrow night or else this coming Thursday. Blood drives, the Red Cross is interested in having more blood drives, the ones they've had here have been successful, in fact, there's one coming, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, here in the Great Hall on Friday. They'd like either a date in January and also a date in February. I haven't had any problems with the blood drives at all, they haven't created any problems, I don't see any. They think they can get enough people to make it worthwhile for them, I don't see a problem in providing the Great Hall, unless the board does, and I'll just say to them, "Fine, pick a date, one date in January, one date in February."
I'd just let them pick the date that works for them.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Request for Town Hall Green, we had someone ask to hold a socially distant wedding ceremony on Saturday, November 21st, I believe, I gave you a copy of their email.
Are they going to have need of the building in any fashion? Restrooms or anything like that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
South Shore Regional Tech sent in, I guess, an application, a submission, that they would like the town to try and get money from Plymouth Cares for, on the basis of a prorated share of the number of students at South Shore that come from Halifax, they sent in plenty of paperwork to back it up. It's only $445.15, so it won't be material in the larger scheme for us. I mean, the only question, you know, they've, I guess, have been working, must, must have been working with the other towns, the towns that mostly are sending their students there, but they sent a barrel full of paperwork, so my hope is, I mean, Plymouth might always have questions, but they certainly, they haven't just sent, give us money, they've done the, you know, the necessary background work, and I would recommend that the board have Sandy get the submission in as part of whatever, you know, the next time we submit bills into Plymouth Cares.
Alright, we need a motion?
Motion to submit the $445.15?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have a letter from the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, about a question on zoning for 648 Plymouth Street.
So, I'm going to recuse myself.
The Building Inspector had indicated, given the possible conflicts of interest in him making any decisions on property owned by Gordon R. Andrews, he's recommending that the matter and the questions be given to a special ZEO. The question would be, does more than one unit exist in the property? If so, is this a permitted use under the town zoning bylaws? And if so, have the necessary approvals been obtained, or is the use grandfathered? And so, my recommendation would be, in fact, to follow Building Inspector's recommendation and send this to the Zoning Enforcement Officer, Building Inspector, we've been using, when we've had other possible conflicts of interest, he's the Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer out in Norden. We've used him on a couple of other properties during the past year.
Is he available?
I believe so, yes.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on E22 Plymouth Street, we had a similar question, but in this case, there's no potential conflicts of interest, so this was simply a notification to the board, the letter was sent to the property owner of the potential violation. On the ambulance abatements, where are we? Here, let's see. We have for October 2020, $145,503.22.
You guys are doing a lot of running around all day.
Somebody's not paying the bills, I'm...
Right.
Well, this isn't unusual, they tend to be high anyway, because...
Yeah. What was the number, Charlie?
And that's all from one person?
No. You'd have to go there a lot. Most of the abatements are so high because the, you know, we set the bills that match up to health insurance, but anyone that's on Medicare will only get a small percentage of that, so that's why those numbers are generally down.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have, see, stop signs. OCPC did a traffic study at Hillside and 10th, 11th Streets. If the town wanted to put in stop signs, the recommendation from OCPC that they be placed on the hillside approaches to the intersection. I've sent that information to the Traffic Study Committee, so I'll wait back to hear from them for, if they're recommending, based on OCPC's work, whether stop signs should be put up there. Then we have Executive Session.
Can I ask a question of, because I live in the neighborhood, there hasn't been that many accidents or anything, but I'm aware of down in that area, down there, why would a stop sign be there?
Is that the last time you had an accident?
Well, we had complaints from residents in the area about people not stopping properly at the intersection, so the possibility would have been to put in a four-way or a two-way. The traffic volume doesn't necessitate a four-way, so if you're not doing a four, you need to do a two. If you're doing a two, then you pick the street that has the least amount of traffic going to that intersection. If the board, or both of the Traffic Committee and the board feel that there isn't enough traffic to necessitate having a stop sign at the intersection, then it's the board's decision to make.
What is the cost, normal cost for a stop sign? You know, maybe see, you know?
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not huge, I mean, it's probably a couple hundred dollars or something.
Okay.
But, I mean, I, there's no question, you're right, Troy, I mean, there's not a lot of traffic to begin with, or not, and we don't have accidents.
They have one at, come in here in Indian Pass, we put one in there.
Right.
Just one day, yeah?
Yeah.
No, but, Simpson and Love, I live on two of those, but that must be close.
I mean, all I can tell you is it came, you know, the issue, for instance, came up at the recent town meeting, so I contacted OCPC and asked, "Can you take a look?" That's the information we got back. It's up to the town to make a decision whether or not to put the stops...
Did they do a traffic test?
Yeah.
How, too?
Yeah.
And they still believe there should be a stop sign?
Well, no, they're not saying that, they're saying, "If you're going to put a stop sign in, then you put them in on the hillside approaches." They're not saying you should have one, they're saying, "If you do want one, that's the way to go." I mean, we got, we have any more number of intersections in town that have more accidents, even now. You know, Pine Street and Plymouth Street, for instance, we've got stop signs on Pine Street, but we still get accidents. But, again, the reason I went up and checked with OCPC and asked them to do the work was that we did, it was brought up at town meeting, I thought it prudent, given the complaint that was brought up, to get the research done, and then at least, if a decision was made one way or the other, you'll have something to back it up. You say, for instance, "There's not enough traffic at this intersection to necessitate having stop signs." We haven't had accidents at this location for emptying out, emptying... We haven't had accidents at this location for emptying out emptying years. So, I mean, at this point, all I'm doing is referring it to the Traffic Study Committee. I'm not asking the board selectmen to make any sort of decision today.
That's the appropriate action at this point and see what the committee comes back with. That appears to be the last agenda, right?
For the public session, so for Executive Session, I listed both the contract negotiations with the sergeant's patrol officer, a mixed unit, and all the unions at the two schools as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Then in addition, I put the four court cases involving the town and Mr. Andrews for Executive Session as discussing strategy with respect to litigation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And so it's the board's decision whether you want to go into Executive Session or not.
So moved. Second.
Yeah. Yeah. All of them, we have them?
Well, I don't have anything for the collective bargaining. I have no collective bargaining.
All right, I'll take a vote to recuse myself on those.
All right, Mr. Gore and Mr.?
He's handing in.
Mr. Garrett voted yes. We won't be coming back in the public session, and there won't be any further announcements.